Good evening. I'd like to call the East Green Bush Central School District School Board of Education meeting for August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five to order. Attendance, I believe we have everybody except for Sam, Jesse, and Mike. If we can stand. Okay, our first item is to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters leading to the appointment employment of a particular person. Do I have a motion? Kathy, second, Rob S. All in, all in favor? Okay. So I need a motion to begin regular meeting. Kathy, second. Rob M., all in favor? Okay, so first up is our oath of office for our alternate ex officio student member of the board.
Do you, William, William Boleum, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of ex officio student school board member according to the best of your ability?
I do. Okay, so next up, approval of the draft minutes from the organizational meeting from July ninth. Does anybody have any questions?
Oh.
Questions or comments? Okay, motion to approve. Rob P., second. Rob M., all in favor? And approval of draft minutes from the regular meeting from July ninth. Any questions or comments? Motion to approve. Kathy, second. Cindy, all in favor? All right. Board forum, starting with Kathy.
I'm all set.
I'm, I'm all set as well.
Okay. Moving into the public forum. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitor's forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited and will be declared out of order. All comment shall be limited to five minutes. Sophie?
This one's a little different from the other one I went to. Hi, everybody. My name is Sophia Anguer. I live at Six Leslie Circle, and I have a future first grader at the Janay Elementary School. The parents and I have reviewed the most recent class update size, and we're concerned about the numbers for the first grade class at Janay. There's still large inequality in class sizes among both Janay versus the other school districts. Janay is coming in with the highest average first grade class size at twenty three point seven, while Belltop has an average class size of sixteen. Secondly, there's a large inequality between the first grade class size at Janay versus the average class size by grade. Janay first grade has the largest first grade class size for all, sorry, Janay first grade has the third largest class size for all the district grade levels. I know my son, he's in first grade. He's one of the youngest learners, and there's no more TA support in the first grade classroom. I know we had TAs in kindergarten, which were really helpful, but having that large of a class size with no TA support just is concerning myself and some of the other parents that are going into Janay first grade. And just, we just wanted to stress that this is a time that we need to give these young learners a smaller class size to promote their learning and growth. I know there have been many parents who have emailed Dr. Coats out of concern for the first grade class size. We just asked that the board please consider approving additional funding to add another teacher to the first grade at Janay.
Anyone else? Okay, reports and presentations. First up, modified nine soccer.
Need me to reshare it again, please?
No, no, I, I said.
Well said. So I wanted to update the board tonight on some movement that we had made with athletic offerings within the interscholastic athletic program. So we know that there had been an appeal in the past regarding the possibility of adding a modified nine program for our interscholastic athletic soccer program. It is one of, I believe, only three offerings throughout the district that does not have a modified offering. I'm sorry, modified nine offering. Some of the things that we had to look into were, was there data to support this? And when we did a historical look back, even just in two thousand and twenty four on the boy side, there were twenty student athletes that tried out for the team that were not able to make the team, that were actually cut from the program with no other ability to participate in the soccer program. And while there were no cuts on the girl's side and speaking with Mr. Jones, our athletic director, they were looking at strong numbers coming up and the possibility of girls then being eliminated from the program. We know that moving forward, that interest will remain strong for the foreseeable future. So the essential question, can we create an opportunity for all of our student athletes to participate in interscholastic athletics and soccer? And again, we believe this is one of only three sports within the program that does not have a modified nine program. One of the things that we took, looked at first was if we were to move forward, what is the ability of those students to have adequate and appropriate competition? There are ten schools within the suburban council that we would have a chance for our boys to compete against, seven with the girls. Moving forward, we would be able to schedule twelve games for each team for the season, six home and six away to mitigate some of the costs of running the team for the year. We would need to make sure that we can secure transportation within the schedule that already exists, and then we would have to make sure that we can have appropriate uniforms for them to compete for the season. And working with Mr. Jones, we were able to move very quickly throughout the summer to be able to prepare for this. The total cost, the anticipated cost of doing so is about twenty thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars for both teams. I want to just pause there for a moment. While we are going to offer both programs, should one of those programs not run, so if there's not enough girls to facilitate a modified nineteen, that cost gets cut in half. Okay, and we, we are prepared to support that through some efficiency savings that we've already seen through the month of July. And we would know that also, again, back to if we do not run one or the other in terms of genders, that we can we could modify the coaching stipends as well to meet the time that they served in that position. And again, we watch all of these appointments annually. A coaching appointment is not something that you have in perpetuity for your career within the district. These are annualized appointments, and we look at all of our programs to make sure that if we are investing in those programs for our students, are we getting ample participation within those sports? So we are prepared to move forward with this. Mr. Jones has been working very hard to be able to do this. We believe adding this offering for our students really will encourage some positive outcomes, both on the athletic field and in the classroom, because as we know, when our students are involved, they're going to be successful in their academic program as well. Happy to address any questions?
We aren't putting on this, right?
This is not required.
Alright, so next up, class size.
So this is intended to be a follow-up to the district tracking this data for some period of time from the spring. There had been several presentations, one that I found from Mr. Styles all the way back to the early spring, another one by Mr. Simmons at the end of June, and we want to make sure that we're continually communicating on where we stand in terms of class size. We continuously monitor with our principals where our class sizes stand and where enrollment stands right up until and including the beginning of the new school year. We always want to make sure that obviously we are maintaining our contractual obligations, but are we maximizing the available resources that we have to ensure that we're making the best offerings that we have within those resources? Sometimes that means that the spectrum will shift, if you will, in terms of what those class sizes or the ratios will look like. Sometimes we are able to do more, sometimes we're able to do less, but the most important thing is we are focused on maximizing the resources we have to create the most optimal learning environment that we have in any given school year. So what do we consider when we have to go through that process? First of all, we look at overall enrollment. Right now, we're fairly static from where we were from last year. This will become even more of a concern as we look forward, because some of the demographic reports that we are examining, we are seeing uptick in enrollment. We are going to have to watch this even more closely than we are right now. We always look at student needs and student profiles. Our teachers sit together with their administrators when they're doing their groupings, looking critically at where are we placing those students in classrooms? So especially with the concerns on when we are looking at class sizes starting to inch upwards again, how do we make sure that the groups of students that we are putting together, our teachers know them the best? And when our teachers sit with their principals and they look at these groupings, we want to make sure that those combinations are going to set those students up for the most success, even when we have to look at class sizes that might be inching a little bit upwards. The other thing to consider carefully is class sectioning is truly an administrative function. From the superintendent down to the assistant superintendent to the building principals, this responsibility belongs to us administrate, as administrators. The board provides us that resource of an approved budget that you approve to put out before a community. Beyond that, class sectioning, class size, unless the board takes other action, it, it belongs with the administrators. And when they say other action, if you were to create a policy or something like that, there's no vote required. There's nothing that is in policy that the board has to take any action besides to monitor appropriate use of the budget to make sure that we're achieving common goals. And so also important to stress that the current staffing levels are with, are within what was approved for the twenty five, twenty six budget. We know that we face some challenges this year, and we know that we are looking forward to a budget that could be equally as challenging. We need to keep that in mind. As, and as I discussed before, we always want to make sure that we are soliciting that input from our staff to make sure we're maximizing the best student groupings based on instructors and teachers' knowledge of our students. Want to talk a little bit about budget planning when it comes to staffing throughout the year. We need to be transparent in the fact that we do have small contingency built into this budget, but what does that mean? We have contractual obligations on certain class sizes that we need to be mindful of. That should a new housing development be finalized, and we have twenty to thirty new students in that housing development? Should there be a need in a special education classroom where we have to open up a new section? That's what that contingency is there for. If we move forward and utilize that contingency even before the school year starts, we would be forced to look at one of two things. Either we would have to make cuts in other areas to appropriate for that, or we would have to use future reserves and additional fund balance to be able to pay for any of that. You need to be very careful of that because it's a double-edged sword. One of the things I wanted to remind the board, there was an increase of almost five percent of use of reserves and appropriated fund balance. And it's important to really truly understand what that means. When you continue to increase use of appropriated fund balance and reserves, I don't want to say you're that much further behind, but when you move into the new fiscal school year, when you go into twenty six, twenty seven, that money needs to be replaced in the new school year even before you start. And from a revenue perspective, if you're that much further behind, don't forget, your expenses are going up. They're not staying static. We're doing everything that we can to try to control expenses, but that trajectory is always upwards. So essentially, we need to think about the fact that if we spend down those monies, we're behind the eight ball already. We need to be able to find that money in other places if we were to move forward with any additional staffing in any shape around the, around the district. You just need to be mindful of, even within that context, if we do that, it's just not a sustainable model. We need to look for ways to cut back on the use reserves, to cut back on the use of appropriated fund balance to get to more of a sustainable level of where our revenue and expenditure stand. So I just think that, again, I don't want to harp on budget for a long time, but it's an important perspective to think about as to why your administration is coming to you with the recommendation of we need to hold where our budget is right now. Full understanding, we have concerns that our class sizes are eking up, been talking with our building principals, trying to make sure that every resource that we can is put in place to ensure for a successful school year. But this is, this does sit in the background, and it is important consideration that we have to take into account. So with that said, how do we make sure that we are maximizing those available resources while addressing sectioning, making sure that we're doing everything we can to ensure for an optimal learning environment for our students? So some of the things that we've done, the last presentation was given on June. We've been tracking that data over the last month and a half to see that we are watching where sections are increasing. We've seen some sections decrease. We're watching that very carefully, and like I said, believe last count with the registrar's office, there was still nine or ten new student registrations that we're watching that we'll watch right up to the, the day that school opens to make sure that we're in a good place. Our assistant superintendent for curriculum, the principals, registration will watch that data. We have to make any last second movement, we will. Been working closely with Ms. Mulligan to make sure that the budget is in the appropriate spot and where it needs to be to support all of that sectioning. We're giving a current update now, mid-August, to make sure that we have that checkpoint, and we are where we need to be again in terms of sectioning and budget. And we will make one final review of the sections right before the school year starts to ensure that we are in compliance, not only with our contractual obligations, but again, that maximization of resources to make sure that we put everything into our classrooms that we possibly can. And again, that goal is to create high-quality instruction and program, programming throughout the district. So looking at the data, what we have done in this presentation is include our special education sections as well. The previous presentation in June did not do that. We're looking at average class size ranges that range anywhere from sixteen all the way up to the maximum of twenty six and a half in some of our sections. We know also, though, when you look at the upper grade levels, those are the points at which our students are getting ready to transition to middle school. When we get into middle school, the data is not here tonight, but in general, those middle school sections, when you look at core content areas, do have a data history of being a little bit larger at the same time. I'm not going to read all the data. Again, we have this posted on board docs. I'm glad to address any questions at the end, but just wanted to give a review of where we stand, the number of sections, and the average class sizes inclusive of all of our students. If we look at a historical range of by grade level where we have stood, we are pretty much in line with where we were in the pre-COVID era. Again, we do have a few outliers, but our class sizes, our class sizes are still within those ranges. I would just invite the board to remember that in the twenty two to twenty four range, it was a period of time where two things were happening. Number one, there was COVID monies that the district was receiving where we invested heavily in staff, but we were also in a period of time where the foundation aid restoration was coming into play, and there was a lot more revenue coming into the district that has leveled off. In some cases, we have to be mindful of, will there be a future decline at the same time? And as I shared before, as expenses continue to go up and revenue plateaus, we have to look for ways to close that gap, and we need to be careful of that. But at the same time, we don't want to give up, and we don't want to forget about creating high-quality learning environments for our students. I do believe the section that we have, yes, we have to be transparent. We're watching it tick up a little bit, but it's not far from where we have been in the pre-COVID era. If we look at this also historical by building, again, we, we did see some minor upticks from where we were in June from some new entrance. Again, some of this data is on an uptick as well, because this includes our special education sections as well. But our enrollment is, like I said earlier, fairly static from where we were last year. But if you look at our FTEs as well, we're right in line with where we were in the pre-COVID period as well. And keeping in mind that the, those COVID monies and the foundation aid restoration monies have plateaued. Again, just talking about outcomes. We will continue, like I said, working with our building principals. Our building principals have been deeply engaged in the process of looking at the sectioning. I want to thank all of them for being very active and sharing this data with us right up to and including tonight. We will make sure that we look at how do we support our classroom teachers to make sure that they have what they need to deal with increased enrollment, whether that is through professional development, whether that is through looking at you, creative use of related support staff, looking at making sure they have tangible materials in the classroom so that they can differentiate within the classroom. We want to make sure that we are doing everything possible to support the teachers to meet the needs of our students. We'll continue to come back to the Board of Education if there are any significant shifts in class size and or sectioning. If something happens where we do need to open another section, we'll ensure that we come back and report to you immediately and what the action plan would be to address those issues. We'll make sure that we do that as, at a public meeting to be sure that we're sharing that with the community as well. And again, we are coming back to report to the board tonight that at this time, there won't be any additional hiring for class size reduction or sectioning adjustments unless something comes up that is necessitated by contract or any mandated needs for students with disabilities. A pause there. I can go back to any data. I can clarify anything. I want to just make sure we address the questions of the board and, and anything that I can explain further.
Okay, moving on to strategic planning.
So it takes some latitude just for a minute. Much of what we have to do in central office really has to do, deal with mandates and compliance and trying to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's. But when you get into strategic planning, this is the truly exciting work. This is where you can sit with all of your stakeholders, with your community, with your students, with your teachers, and really dream about a vision for the school district. This is where we get to dig deep and make sure that that greatness that we feel and the high-performing school district that we have, not only does it continue and we continue to stabilize and make sure that we're supporting what's going well, we get to look to a vision for the future, and how do we try to even make it better? So early in the spring, the district had engaged with a consultant from Leadership Solutions to really get that process kicked off. And we wanted to make sure that in engaging in this process, that we really entered into it with full fidelity. One of the things to think about when you engage in a strategic planning process is when you're on the inside of something, sometimes you bring a little bu, a little bias and a little implicit bias. You're proud of something, you're possessive of something. And when you start a process like that, having a neutral third party come in and be the facilitator for that, so that when you collect your data, gives you that neutral viewpoint. And sometimes it's very affirming. Sometimes a neutral party will come in and say, boy, this is doing great. Your facilities are moving forward, your academic programs are strong. Athletic teams are great, your art program, your music program, but sometimes they'll come in and help you look at something that you didn't really see. Have you considered this for your offerings for students with disabilities? Have you considered this to strengthen your math program? That neutral third party is a great voice, and engaging with Leadership Solutions and Dr. Kevin McGowan, it really gave us a good kickoff to do that. So to begin it, we were, to begin the process, we really asked what steps needed to be taken to ensure an inclusive and well-structured process that will produce a plan that's effective, that we can use to inform the future work and the initiatives of the district. Going back to some of the action steps, again, we search for a consultant. One of the first things that the consultant did was it did a community-wide thought exchange. It allowed that anonymous reporting for community members to weigh in on how's the district doing? What's going well? What would we like to see? And we had really great participation from the community, largely very positive. There were some, some great critical things that we have taken to heart, and we're getting ready to look at our action plan for, for improvement, but we really had very high participation, which was great. We had higher than average participation on the survey years. When you do a community survey, you're lucky if you get ten percent. We were well above that, which we were very happy to see. Then it transitioned into administrative meetings. Mr. Simons was excellent while I was getting ready to onboard to partner with me so I could be a part of the process from the beginning. Those onboarding meetings for both me and as being part of the strategic planning process were really to help the administrators, perhaps that have never been through it before, to understand what it was going to look like. What would their roles be? How are we going to interact? What was the expectation of them going to be? And to have the first look opportunity to start to unpack some of that data. Fast forward now into after the first of July with the transition and superintendency. We recently, this past August fifth, had our community-wide engagement. We had students, we had parents, community members, staff, faculty, administration, and board members there. It was an open guided dialogue about the district and some of the feedback. It was provided for time for us to make suggestions and topics that may have risen. There was a final opportunity as well to include other suggestions, perhaps that were not discussed or topics that didn't come up. Our building administrators and our department and district administrators also have the ability to give a presentation of what they call their five minutes of fame. What's going well? What are they most proud of? Where do they see opportunities for growth? And what do they see the pathway potentially as how we could get there? That is going to transition now into our action planning teams meeting, which is going to come up on the twentieth from two to four P. M. The administration will now take all of that data, working with our facilitator, and they'll start to organize it into actionable steps. Some of it needs to be separated into certain themes on how we're going to script out those goals. And then some of it will be put to the side because perhaps some of those things that we've discussed are already in progress. We want to make sure that the outcome of this plan, the plan that we put in place is adaptive, flexible, and it's inclusive of a timeline for achievement. Sometimes you can put some lofty goals in there, but if you don't have benchmarks for when you're going to look back at how you're doing on your plan, it can go on in perpetuity, and the meaning and the purpose of those goals can get lost. But you also want to have adaptivity and flexibility with that plan, but sometimes when you get into something, you realize that the steps that you have maybe engaged in or the goal might be a little bit too lofty, and you need to put some intermediary goals in there as well. So we want to make sure that that will be really something that is a focal point as we start to finalize the plan to present to the board. And that will lead us to our final phase of the plan. After the action planning session is done, we will come back to the Board of Education with a proposed plan. We'll make sure that the staff and the community are aware of the finalized plan, what it looks like, and we'll begin to make sure that those goals are set within the plan for the board to be made aware of. A board does not typically adopt a strategic plan. You recognize it, you support it through use of funds with. You recognize it, you support it through use of funds within the budget. When we adopt something, if we have to make a midstream change, then we have to come back for adoption again. What happens with a strategic plan is we keep informing the board so you can ask questions, you can be a part of it, and you can make sure that the resources that you have approved in the budget are being used appropriately to support the work that's been scripted out within the strategic plan. I wanted to provide that update. I wanted to thank our board members who were able to take part in that. I hope that you found value into the voice with the community. Mr. Harken is not here, but I wanted to thank him also. He was able to get three of our high school students to participate. I was so impressed with some of the student voice at the table with some of the critical questions that were asked. I think we're in a very good place now to to enter into the action planning phase of the creation of our strategic plan. Happy to to address any questions, share anything else?
Good, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to regular business. First up, approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Any questions or comments? Okay, motion to approve? Cindy, second. Kathy, all in favor? Next up, intermunicipal agreement for interscholastic hockey merger for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Any questions or comments? No, okay. Motion to approve? Kathy, second. Rob M., all in favor? Agreement for merged athletic participation of girls swim team for fall twenty twenty-five. Any comments or questions? Motion to approve? Rob M., second. Rob P., all those in favor? Okay, Labella Associates additional services for the E V buses. Any questions or comments? Okay, motion to approve? Rob M., second. Rob P., all in favor? Resolutions authorizing participation in cooperative energy purchasing service for natural gas and electricity. Any questions or comments? No, okay. All in favor? Or no, I'm sorry, motion to approve. Cindy, second. Rob P., all in favor? Okay, first reading of policy number eighty-one thirteen, extreme heat condition days. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, so this plan, it's adopted from the state's recommendations, right? I guess my only concern or something for us to be thinking about is the remote instruction. I know during COVID, we had Wi-Fi hotspots, right? Was that the case for those without Wi-Fi access? So yeah, just want to make sure there was technology equity across the district in that if if there were plans to go to remote. I mean, we don't always do that, right? We have a snow day and we don't do, we don't do remote.
So remote instruction is truly a last resort.
Yeah.
I am certain that Mr. Goodwin is prepared where necessary to make the reasonable accommodations for students who don't have access. But keeping in mind, remote is something that we're only going to use if we have to. There was great struggles with that, but absolutely is something that we have to keep in mind.
Any other questions or comments?
And I apologize, that's just a question. So the next meeting, we have the second reading, and then we approve it.
No, you'll, you can second read and approve it.
Okay.
Because we have to have that adopted by September first.
Okay, thank you.
No. So if there's any questions in between now and then, and desire to make any modifications, we can.
All right, next up, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, AS seven contract for Bosie Services. Any questions or comments? Motion to approve, Rob P., second. Rob M., all those in favor? Okay. Physician Services, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, driver physicals. Any questions or comments? Motion to approve? Sure. Second, Rob M., all those in favor? Next up, committee reports.
Okay. It's okay, I'm going to share around the table. There should be enough. Wait till that gets around. So what is coming around is a two-sided sheet of board committees. On one side is a list of the committees that ran and that were slated to run during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year under the Board of Education. On the flip side, I had made some potential recommendations for reorganization of possibly folding some of these committees under a larger umbrella, code of conduct, curriculum, budget and finance, policy. Some of those subcommittees that were developed could be an agenda topic, if you will, under a larger umbrella committee. I think getting your schedule done, having quarterly meetings scheduled or more frequent, if you see necessary, you would be able neatly and effectively to be able to discuss some of those topics. Some of these topics obviously are mandated as per contract that we have to be careful of to make sure that we're inclusive of enough people in those committee meetings. But I think being a little bit more efficient in structuring of our committees would allow for greater participation. It will allow for people to plan better for their meetings. I think if the board wants to take some time and consider this, discuss this a little bit further at the next meeting, if the board is comfortable, we could set the committees, and this in no way, shape or form is meant to to tell you what to do. It's just recommendations. If you feel strongly, we should work together and move some of the topics and some of the committees around. But this was something that I had seen as a potential way to be more efficient with structuring how the board runs the subcommittees outside of regular board meetings. After that, if the board is comfortable, then you can set your agenda and the board can talk about what committee assignments each individual board member would want to take on. Anything that I can answer, any questions? So so my recommendation would be spend some time with this, review it. We can have some email dialogue if necessary before the next meeting. I would recommend coming back at the next meeting, being ready to make some final assumptions so that our clerk can work together with my office and with all of you to start to set a calendar. And like I said, at the next meeting, start to take committee assignments as well, so the committees can prepare to meet throughout the school year.
Table motions? Old business? So consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the consent?
Just for one second. So Mr. Simons is here tonight, and as we know, he has been serving as our interim Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum. Mr. Simons, could you just give a brief update on some of the work that you've done for approval of U B K contracts?
Sure. Yeah, we are required to have contracts for all of our outside groups, community-based organizations that provide U P K programming, with the exception of Questar. Questar three, which operates the four classrooms within our buildings. We are, that's part of the regular services agreement that we have that you've approved. Those plans and contracts have to be signed by the agency. They've been reviewed by their legal counsels. They were submitted last week and this week, and they're required to be approved by the Board of Education. I also have to file these contracts through the New York State Education Department P K office. And I'm in the process of completing those submissions in addition to some reporting that is required regarding last year's program, which has been submitted and reporting that is due at the end of the month regarding next year's program. So all of those things are in line with the New York State Education Department requirements. We've been collaborating with the agencies to make sure that we get off to a good start in the fall and a very cooperative relationship among all the parties.
And if they have any comments or questions?
Just related to Rob's question, the the number of students was corrected, eighteen to sixteen?
Correct. That was my error. I adjusted it this morning, so thank you for pointing it out. Appreciate it. There are those two agents, the tutor time is limited to sixteen in accordance with their license. And I did communicate with them before making the change.
So can I get a motion to approve? Cindy, second. Kathy, all in favor? And then be it then.
Yeah. So it is an exciting night. We, earlier in the school year, had posted with the resignation of Mr. Styles for our new Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum to serve here in the school district. We were very fortunate to have almost thirty applicants for the position. We had some very high-quality interviews, but throughout that process, it was very evident that one candidate not only stood out as being the most prepared, but also the most passionate about our school district. From the large committee interview to a meeting with Mrs. Mulligan and I, to our one-on-one interview, it was evident not only was she highly prepared to take on the role of becoming our next Assistant Superintendent, but also would carry that torch forward with an intimate knowledge, not only have grown up here, but having served here as a longstanding educator in the district and before the board makes a motion to have her appointed. It's my pleasure to announce the candidate to become the new Assistant Superintendent for East Green Bush is Lisa Mahar. Will Lisa address the board after the motion?
Okay. So motion to approve? Okay, well, that's where, yeah, that's where I'm at, I think.
Yeah.
Most, yes. Yeah, resignation. So motion to approve the resignation. Cindy, second. Kathy, and all in favor? So. Is there?
Yeah, motion to a point.
All right, motion to a point. Kathy, second. Rob P., all in favor? Okay.
Congratulations, Mrs. Mulligan.
Well, I appreciate that I'm being given the opportunity to speak tonight after this appointment, much anticipated appointment. I've been nervous and I decided I was going to write something down for the first time in a long time. So bear with me, it'll take about a minute. Good evening, and I just wanted to say after working over twenty-five years in East Green Bush School District, I am truly honored. I just want you all to know that and humbled by the Board of Education's approval of my appointment tonight as the new Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction for the East Green Bush Central School District. I would like to sincerely thank the initial interview committee for their time and thoughtful questions. The entire process was rigorous, yet fair. And I want you to know that it provided me with an exciting challenge now on this new journey that I'm on. I would also like to thank the Board of Education, Mr. Simons, Mrs. Mulligan, Dr. Coats, for their trust and belief in me. I am committed to the East Green Bush Schools and to our collaborative team. Most importantly, to my personal family here, who is here tonight, my daughters, Karina and Farin. In the back, my husband Marty and Bailey, my son, who is cheering me on from home for their unwavering support throughout this process and for always being there for me. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, guys. So lastly, to my extended East Green Bush family, truly my family, my second family, I call you guys and gals. Thank you for all your support over the years and for the work we have accomplished with M T S S, E L A, C B Ts, and much, much more. Let's continue this great work we're doing. I'm eager to begin this new chapter. I look forward to providing academic excellence, stability, continuity for the district's curriculum and instruction on a larger scale and am committed to contributing effectively and productively from day one, which is tomorrow. Thank you.
No new business, I don't think. Second, public forum?
Good evening. Dan Wagner, I live at Two Johnny Place, social studies teacher at Columbia High School and E G T A president. I want to offer congratulations to Lisa. The E G T A is very, very proud of you. We're so happy that you came from our ranks and that, you know, they have to come from, come at us to get good administrators. We are so excited to work with you. We're really proud and, you know, couldn't be happier that you got the job. So congratulations. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, board forum, starting on this side.
Also, thanks.
I just want to say that I went to the NISBA Association locally, and it was wonderful. They talked about strategic plan and the portion of the graduate from the state on the rollout of that, some of the fiscal challenges and what other districts are doing and hearing, you know, the common concerns and how to address it. So it was very informative and very helpful. So thank you for the opportunity.
I have a question for you. Is it all online? Do you know that what you went, that was the weekend, that was away? Do you know if you can get that on? I'll check, but I didn't know.
We have access to all the power points, so I can share.
All right, thank you. I don't have anything yet. Thank you.
I just wanted to say welcome to Lisa.
Thank you.
Um, this is exciting. It's time of transition, which is a little scary, but I think it's also a lot of opportunity here. So I'm so happy that you're staying with us and welcoming you to this new role.
Executive, we don't need them. Okay, so motion to adjourn. Rob P., second. Rob M., all in favor?